Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Alderman meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025. First order of business tonight is additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda, and I would just like to request hearing no issues to move the executive sessions to the end of the meeting, if that's all right with the...
So moved.
We don't need a motion, we'll just do it.
Okay.
Alrighty. Seeing none. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to change to the agenda? Seeing none. Next up is amendment and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move for the approval.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve our minutes. Anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Okay, next up is public comment period. We have three items on the agenda, three folks who would like to speak, and then after that, we'll open it up to anyone else. First one on my agenda is Amelia Shelton, Free Youth Track Meet, May 24th, 2025, at Alumni Field. Is... Alrighty, here you are. Well, welcome.
Good evening. Do I use this, or just...
Yeah, you can... You don't need to. You can just leave it right alone, it'll be fine. And if you could just... You are Amelia, obviously.
Yes.
And Rutland City.
Mm-hmm.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I just want to take a minute of your time and talk about the event that a Rutland track team is putting on to support the health and wellbeing of the young people in our community. In partnership with the Rutland Rec Department, the track team at the high school is hosting a community youth track meet for kids ages 13 and under on Saturday, May 4th, at... May 24th, sorry, at 10:00 a.m. at our high school track. In addition to exposing kids to track and field as a sport, our goal is to encourage kids to stay active, connect with others, and experience the joy and confidence that come with physical activity. We all recognize the growing need to support the youth and their mental health and their wellbeing, and this is a positive event that'll take a step towards that. There will be track and field events for all skill levels, so everyone is welcome, as well as music, prizes, and a fun and supportive atmosphere. Parents can register their kids free of charge through the Rutland Rec Department page, and we're hoping to see even more people come out to support our community's youth. Thank you for your time and for supporting our efforts to make Rutland a stronger, healthier place.
Wonderful, and just to reiterate, that is Saturday, May 24th?
Yes, 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m. Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Amelia. Appreciate you coming in. So Colleen Shattuck, talk a little bit about our summer concert series. Colleen?
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. I've been working with Amelia. I just wanted to say that it's been really, really fun and exciting to see her take the reins on this whole project, and I've even signed up my kid for the track meet, so I'm looking forward to that. But we are starting the summer concert series on June 25th, and that will be the grand opening of the gazebo. We have six concerts this year, and the first one we're kicking off with is Satin and Steel. July 2nd, we have a local band, Honey. July 9th, we have the West Rutland Rock Lab. July 16th is the Aaron Adet Band. July 23rd is Rick Reddington and Tough Love. And then July 30th is the Scott Hopkins Trio, which is the first time we've had this band at Main Street. And this year, we are planning on adding a few things. We'll have a dessert cart there every week. We're hoping to add food trucks in and partnering with nonprofits so that they can have tables at the events.
Cool.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, look forward to some good weather, hopefully, for our summer concert series.
We're taking all the rain now, so the concerts have clear weather.
That's right. It's gonna be sunny every week. Very good. Thank you, Colleen. Appreciate it. Next up, Barbie Spaulding to talk about the Mentor Connector.
Hello.
Hello.
So, as many of you know, the Mentor Connector is very dear to my heart. I was matched with a young lady nine years ago and have enjoyed being a part of her life. I'm proud to say she turned 16 yesterday and got her driver's license. The Mentor Connector is a vital resource in Rutland County for many youth who could benefit from someone outside their family to help them navigate so many of life's challenges. As a mentor, I have also reaped many benefits and learned a lot about myself through this relationship. It's important that the Mentor Connector be able to provide this resource to our children. You can support this organization at the 17th Annual Mentor Bowl on May 17th at the Rutland Bowlarama. The theme of this year's event is mentoring is out of this world, and there will be fun, food, raffles, prizes, and a DJ. All proceeds will benefit Rutland County Youth Programming, and there are many ways to participate. You can sponsor the event, put together a team and bowl. There'll be a basket raffle that will be open to the public, and you can also volunteer as help is needed the day of the event. For more information on how you can participate, you can go to mentorconnector backslash bowling or call 802-775-3434. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Alrighty, is there anyone else present tonight outside the rail that would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? Issue not on the agenda. We have a couple of hands. It's not on the agenda? You're certainly welcome. And if I could just politely ask for your name and address for the record?
I'm Cindy Laskovich, and I reside at 22 Engram Ave. in Rutland City. At the last meeting, I provided the totals that were on the petition titled "Petition to Retain Kim Peters as Recreation Superintendent." At the time, it was 644, without having updates from the stores, just the online version. Now it's up to 677. This is still mostly a social media effort, but we certainly know where to get more signatures if there is a need. As I stated before, interest in Kim being renominated and reappointed hasn't waned. People are still signing. People are still watching for news online. People are still commenting, and they're wondering about the damages, like whether Kim's absence could put grants in jeopardy, whether summer staff and volunteers will still sign on or move on without Kim. They're wondering who would teach the popular babysitting class that Kim taught. They're wondering about the swim team and competitions with our top-level equipment and professionally-run meets. Kim, again. And the swim lessons, and what kind of hours these pools will be open, and the summer day camp, which includes swimming at the pool. Because the Recreation Department is reported to have only 17 of 45 program directors, and we're in May now. People are worried about what might have to be cut if Kim isn't reappointed. So who's gonna certify the lifeguards if not Kim? How is the demoralized Recreation Department gonna keep staff and volunteers that they have? But today, now that we're in the month of May, I want to bring to your attention a potential looming crisis for many parents who rely on the summer day camp. It starts right as school ends. It ends shortly before school begins again at the end of August. It starts at 7:30 in the morning and ends at 3:30 in the afternoon, not dissimilar from the school schedule. The 2025 program was announced on social media on January 14th with multiple reminders up to and including the first day of enrollment, February 11th. What else did they post, the Recreation Department, on February 11th? A statement that read like this. Camps are filling up fast. We encourage you to join the waitlist if your desired camp is full when you register. So on the first day of registration, camps filled right up, creating waiting lists on the first day. That's because the summer daycare... Day camp provides the gold standard in summer daycare, and that's a key element of its function. Between swimming lessons and activities and sports and making new friends and learning new things, the camp provides everything parents are looking for for summer experiences for the children to have while they work. When you consider the proximity of this program held at White's to the medical center nearby, it seems likely that... Excuse me. Seems likely that some of the medical professionals we rely on may have their children enrolled in this day camp, but whether they're in the medical field or have another role in our local economy, parents need the services of the summer day camp. As a parent of five, I remember the days of arranging summer care for my children. Full-day programs aren't easy to find and they fill up fast. So what happens if our Recreation Department doesn't have the staffing and needs? What are those families gonna do? So while we may be lured into thinking a Recreation Department is entirely about recreation, fun activities and sports, classes, events, it's much more than that. Within the department are essential services, like the summer day camp, that families rely on, which the community relies on as part of the engine of our local economy. This needs to be fixed. We need Kim renominated, reappointed. She has far more votes than the unanimous five of the Recreation Committee. She has nearly 700.
Thank you very much. I did let that go because she had gotten started, but I just want to mention that later on in the meeting, there is going to be a report from the Recreation Committee on this very topic. So we... I will certainly entertain anyone who would like to speak on that issue at that time after Alderman Clifford gives his report and anyone inside the rail speaks. So, again, I don't want to repeat. We'll save the rest of that for a little later in the meeting. Is there anyone else? I saw a couple of hands on an issue not on the agenda, and you're more than welcome to. And good evening.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
I'm good, good. And if I could just politely ask for your name, please?
My name is Jamie Watkins, and I live on East Washington Street here.
Thank you very much.
So I'm actually here to address the full board. I don't usually say much, but I think it's at that point to where I'm gonna speak my mind. I think what I've seen and what I've read, social media and in the newspaper, is out of hand. I see board members working against each other for our community. You guys are here to make Rutland better. You're to make it stronger and more viable. I see the... A divided board. This half is against that half, that half is against this half. There's personal attacks on each other, and I depend on you guys to make the right choices for my community and my business. I am an implant here back in 1979. I've been here for 46 years, so I consider myself a Rutlander 100%. I've raised my children here. I've gone to school here, and now I have businesses here. I don't expect to see or hear good old boy club antics, which I have, and I read it in the newspaper, of all things, which is horrible. I've played the game for a long time, and I know how to play the game, to directly quote what I read in the newspaper. I think that is childish. I don't think it's professional, and I would expect to see more from the individuals that sit at these tables. So before that seat over there that is currently empty is full, I hope you all take into consideration that you represent us as a community, and your actions speak louder than words. Some of you have been in these chairs since 1970-something. I went back and watched the archives, and I just... I don't understand. I don't understand. We need Rutland to move forward. We need Rutland to grow, and if you guys are working against each other, that's not gonna happen. We can do what we can do, but ultimately, it's in your hands, and to work against each other is just not good gameplay. You gotta play fair in the sandbox, guys. If you expect that from us, we expect that from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak outside the rail on an issue not on the agenda? Anyone else? Seeing none. We will move along to communications from the mayor, and the mayor has several items for us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
President O'Leary. Alright, so the first thing on your desks was placed a nomination with the previous Alderman, Henry Heck, vacating his seat after the last Board of Alderman meeting. I would like the Alderman to consider the following nomination of Kerry Savage to fill the vacancy. The appointment shall run until the next annual meeting, and at such next annual meeting, the legal voters of the city will elect a new person from among their number. So in other words, this position would run until the next town meeting day. The board traditionally tables these nominations, and I ask you to do that now and vote on it at the next quarter.
I'll move to table the nomination.
Second. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table the nomination. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Wonderful. So with us tonight, we have Andrew Brown, who is the Chair of the Rutland County Council in the United Kingdom. So Andrew is gonna speak a little bit about what he does and why he's here, and I am gonna take and hook this laptop up, so just give me a second. Log in, and he's gonna give you a little show. Andrew, if you want to come on up, and then I'll follow you after this. I think that worked.
Wonderful. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to address you at this meeting tonight.
Welcome.
And thank you, everybody, for the hospitality you've given out to myself, my wife, and my son, as we've been traveling around Rutland and looking at the various things you have on offer. I was rather daunted this morning, as I had to drive on the wrong side of the road for me. The first time I'd done that in 40 years. As far as I know, I haven't scraped anybody's car or run into anything that the four-way stops or all-way stops, as you call them, are a new one on me. That was certainly something that I'd never experienced before, but I'm getting more used to it. Being left-handed, I think, probably helps a little bit, too. The slides have disappeared, Mike. Will they come back on? Oh, they will. Oh, right. So this is me, Councilor Andrew Brown, JP. I'm a magistrate. I believe you have magistrates in your jurisdiction legally. I sit in the criminal jurisdiction, so I have the power to send people to prison. The maximum I can send them to jail for is one year, or for two separate offenses, one year each, so a total of two years. I've been busy, as you see, collecting letters after my name for the past few years. So I've got two law degrees, an engineering degree. I'm a chartered environmentalist, a fellow of the Royal Agricultural Society, and a professional fellow of the Institute of Agricultural Management, because in my day job, I am a farmer. I wear various different hats, but that is... That is what my main one is, as a farmer. That is where Rutland is in the UK. For those of you who don't know, we're almost right in the center of the country. And that is the county of Rutland there. As you can see, in the middle, there is a large area of blue. That is Rutland Water. That is the lar... Or was when it was built. That was the largest man-made lake in Europe. Covers 5% of the area of Rutland. It's a massive tourist attraction. A lot of wildlife there, fishing, sailing, and a lot of tourism. And that's where I live, at Fairchild Lodge, Caldecott, in Rutland, right at the bottom with the Last Village in Rutland. Rutland is quite small, the smallest county in England. It's about 15 miles up and down and about 13 across. Population is around 41,000. So we have quite a lot of affinity with Rutland here, because we have a similar-sized population. We have 27 councilors, rather than you are. I don't know, how many have you got? 11.
11.
So we have 27. So, and I am the chairman. That is me taking up my role. As you see, I have a chain of office. I wanted to bring that along to show you, but I was not allowed to do that, because it is actually quite valuable. So that is... That is still at home. I did visit a prison recently to go to their carol service, and one of the prisoners came up to me and took one look at it and said, "That's made of silver. It was made in Italy. It weighs so-and-so," and I think it already worked out where he was gonna sell it. Luckily, I managed to get out of the... Get out of the prison unscathed. Yeah, I recently graduated in law, a master's in environmental law, and that was at the ceremony. As you can see, we in the... In England like dressing up. The guy... One from the right is the Lord Mayor of Leicester, and the guy with the top hat and the mace is the mace bearer of the city of Leicester. Person in the middle is the Chancellor of the University, and I think the guy on the left is the Vice Chancellor. But it's great to be able to go to events like that and see the sort of pomp and ceremony, because we do like that in England, and we're reasonably good at it, I think, as well. As I said, I'm a magistrate, so I sit in the... In the courts in Leicester and Loughborough and deal with some pretty interesting people, I would suggest, and I'm sure you have similar problems to what we have. One of the roles I had exactly 10 years ago, I was a thing called the High Sheriff of Rutland. You still have sheriffs here. Sheriffs in England and Wales are now entirely ceremonial. That is how I used to dress, believe it or not, on a regular basis, with buckle shoes, tights, and a sword. I used to go around to schools to tell them about the ancient role. The first Rutland sheriff, or the first documented Rutland sheriff was in 1129. So that is how old the role is. It's by far and away the oldest civil office in the country. It's a direct royal appointment. I was asked by the Queen at the time to take that up. It's for a year, and of course, it was great fun, prancing about in tights. Of course, people said, "Did you like wearing the tights?" Which, of course, no one knows that I'm wearing the tights tonight still, so... I did have to actually shave my legs, believe it or not, to facilitate that. And it was a real sword. People used to like me to get the sword out. But when I went to schools, I would generally hide in the staff room, and the kids would all be in the assembly like this, sitting on the floor, and I would appear, and there'd be a little ripple going around, especially from the boys. "He's got a sword! He's got a sword! He's got a sword!" And the teacher would say, "Boys and girls, we've got a very special guest today. Can anyone guess who this man is?" Lots of hands would go up. Pirate. The main answer to that question. So, but a great privilege, of course, to be able to be... To take up that role. And as I say, the role obviously came from England to here with your... With your forbears, and you still have them as a legal entity and a law enforcement officer, whereas now, in England, it's entirely ceremonial. Still have them in Scotland, amazingly. Yeah, so one of my roles was to entertain the judges that came to Rutland. Rutland has the oldest continually-used court in the entire country. It's in... It's in Oakham Castle. It's been used since Norman times, so 11th century. And in order for it to keep that title, it has to have a court hearing every second year. I had to organize it. That was one of my jobs as the sheriff. I had hair before I had to organize that event. As you can see, I always like dressing up again. That is one of the top judges in England with his full-bottomed wig on and his entirely ceremonial robe. If you look closely in his hand, it's probably difficult to see, but he has got a black square of cloth that he would have put on top of his head if anyone was given the capital sentence. So if anyone was sentenced to death, then that would... He would have put that black square on his head, which is very strange. That all finished in 1965 in the UK. I've also had various brushes with royalty. You may... That's the late Duke of Edinburgh there on the right-hand side. I thought I'd put these up, because I assumed that the American people quite liked the British royalty. I don't know if they do or not. You didn't like them about 250 years ago. I know you like them. I think we're sort of smooth. We'll forget about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that was an event I was trying to organize in London, but, yeah, it was great to be able to speak to him. He was a very confrontational character, and he did get on about gray squirrels, which I think you lot gave us as a gift at one time, and now they're a big pest. So, thank you for that. That was Prince Edward, who's now the current Duke of Edinburgh, and his wife Sophie, who came to visit us last year. And he entered... I had to meet him at the gates of Oakham Castle. Oakham Castle is actually quite small. There's not much left of it. It's just the main building. All the rest of it disappeared hundreds of years ago. And I said, "Your Royal Highness, welcome to Oakham Castle," to which he replied, "Well, what's left of it?" And I said, "Well, I'm sorry, it isn't Windsor Castle, but we're not quite as wealthy as you in Rutland," as you know. And that was the Princess Royal, who's Princess Anne. That's the King, current King's sister, who is a very... A great advocate of farming and the countryside. So I'm a big fan of hers. That was in Belfast, and which obviously, well, you may not know, is in Northern Ireland, and there has been one or two issues with the British and the Irish. And I almost caused a diplomatic incident when I was in Northern Ireland, because I'd had a serious leg injury, and I had a DVT, thrombosis in my leg, so I was on warfarin as a blood thinner, and I got invited to the ministerial breakfast. And the breakfast was laid out with what I thought was grapefruit juice, and if any of you are medical people, you must... You realize that grapefruit juice is a big no-no when you've got blood thinners, because it can make you bleed out. So I said to one of the waiters, I said, "Excuse me, I can't actually drink grapefruit juice. Could you serve any orange juice?" And bear in mind, we're in Northern Ireland, and the members of Sinn Fein, et cetera, were there, and this guy looked at me and said, "I'm sorry, sir. We don't serve orange juice. It's a bit politically sensitive," because, of course, orange is the color of the Protestants. So that is how deep the divisions run in Northern Ireland. I was quite surprised at that myself. But, yeah, that was me recently on the politics show. I'm a politician, as all you are, doing live telly is slightly more nerve-wracking than doing a recorded interview, but it's amazing to be able to do that on the BBC. And finally, I also do a bit of stand-up comedy. So I won a stand-up competition a few years ago, and I've still got... I think I've got a gig tomorrow night, actually. So I've done gigs far and wide. I did one in Tasmania once. Now I can add Vermont to one of my venues. So I've got a couple of gifts, actually, to hand over to Mayor Mike. I bought a Rutland flag, an updated version of the plaque you've got there, and a book showing some of the highlights of Rutland in the UK. And it'd be great to see anyone from Rutland in Vermont over in the UK. I can guarantee you would receive a very warm welcome as you've given to me. So thank you very much for your attention.
Smile for the birdie. Very good. Thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. President?
You certainly may.
Yesterday was the Loyalty Day Parade, and it was very wet. To my surprise, we had an honored guest who actually marched in the parade with the weather, with the mayor. And because he's from a foreign land, he's from the UK, he's gonna get an award tonight for being the farthest-traveled marching unit in the Loyalty Day Parade. On behalf of John Fisanelly, the Commander of the VFW, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, opposed 648 in Rutland, and the Chairperson Donna Manfredi, and Sheldon Mills for both co-chairs, the committee would like to award you the Samuel Grusel Award for the farthest-traveled marching unit in the Loyalty Day Parade.
That's very kind. Thank you very much.
I think it was sort of at home with all the rain was happening. It's my understanding, though, you're in a drought right now in your area.
Let's do some rain.
Hopefully, you can take some rain back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so one more thing for our honored guest here. I've got a proclamation recognizing and honoring the visit of our friends from the Rutland County, United Kingdom. Whereas the city of Rutland, Vermont, extends a warm and heartfelt welcome to Councilor Andrew Brown, Chair of the Rutland County Council in the United Kingdom, his wife Louise, and their son Ben, as they visit our city, sharing not only our name but spirit of a community and civic pride. And whereas Councilor Brown is a distinguished public servant, you saw the letters after his name, having been elected as Chairman of Rutland County Council, having served with honor as the High Sheriff of Rutland, a position with historical significance dating back nearly a millennium. And whereas beyond his civic duties, Councilor Brown has dedicated... As a dedicated farmer, whose family has worked the land in Rutland, UK for over 300 years, and he is known for promoting environmental stewardship, education, and sustainable agriculture. And whereas his visit to our city symbolizes the enduring connection between our two Rutlands, as you can see, we have a plaque and a crest as well from a previous visit, which... recognize and celebrate the official visit of Councilor Andrew Brown, Louise Brown, and Ben Brown, and extend gratitude for, of our community for their presence, friendship, and the ties they reaffirm between our two great departments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. Okay, I've got a few items left. Um, I'm, we're gonna talk about Bike Month. Bike Month is, uh, the month of May. I have a proclamation here, and then Paige Proudy is gonna come up and say a few words after that. So one more proclamation, no more after this. Whereas bicycles endure, uh, enduring symbols of sustainable transportation have served our communities for nearly 150 years. And whereas bicycles offer affordable and accessible transportation options, promoting freedom of movement for individuals of all ages and abilities. And whereas recreational bicycling fosters outdoor experiences, enhancing the well-being of residents and visitors alike. And whereas bicycle-friendly communities attract tourism, support local economies, and experience safer streets, and reduce motor vehicle traffic. And whereas the Velemon Trail is proposed to connect Rutland City to a statewide network of mountain bike trails. And whereas, uh, sorry, and whereas May has been designated National Bike Month since 1956, highlighting the importance of cycling nationwide, therefore, I, Mike Dundas, Mayor of Rutland City, hereby proclaim May 2025 as Bike Month in and for Rutland City and urge all residents to join in celebrating on this occasion.
Okay. There you go. Very good.
Paige, would you like to come up for a moment? And then I'll be back.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Paige Proudy, and I am the co-owner and founder of Down Valley Bikes and Apparel. I am here representing a local group, Great Rutland Streets. Um, and today, I'm compelled to share with you my awe and pride in many members of our community. Some here have, uh, lived many years, some just got here, some are born here, and some are drawn here for a variety of reasons. Maybe it's work, maybe it's recreation, maybe it's just the love of Vermont. But the one thing that all these people that I am in such awe and have so much pride for have in common is that through biking, they have all found a link to something greater, greater health, greater fun, and greater connections. Our intention with Rutland Bike Week 2025 is to lead a series of group rides, discussions, and workshops with the goal of making people in our community feel safer and more confident on their bikes, from commuting to recreating. You can find a whole bunch of information about all of the events on downvalleyvt.com. I've got flyers, if you want to post them anywhere. Our signature big event is going to be the Bike Rodeo Palooza on May 17th. It's going to be starting at 2:00 PM and go until 6:00 PM. A bike rodeo is an obstacle course created so that young people can have access to interactions on the street without actually having to get out on the street. So a safe way to experience four-ways, to experience hangups, and all that kind of nonsense. So I encourage you all to check out Rutland Bike Week 2025. If you know of anybody that really loves to bike, or is nervous to get on their bike, really wants to get on the rec path, send them my way. Thank you, Mayor Mike, and thank you, everyone here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just comment on the Bike Week.
Please.
Path has been cleaned as of Saturday. We picked out a whole trailer for what's a trash and shopping cart. Bike path is nice and clean, ready to roll.
Oh, good.
The Rotary Club did that on Greenup Day, so that was a nice gesture.
Terrific. Good job.
Okay, just a couple more quick things. Again, uh, Loyalty Day Parade was Sunday, it was rainy, but it was a great turnout for, uh, the participants especially, which I think was fantastic. So thank you to all that put that on. Uh, we did have a visit, uh, over the past two weeks from the, um, Vermont State Department of Environmental, um, Conservation, uh, to the fairgrounds. The three-acre rule, which you may have heard of, uh, is something that is gonna be impacting our community. Uh, the state and the legislature right now, and through the agencies, is working to extend the timelines, both for the, uh, engineering, uh, and for the impact fees. That's very beneficial to Rutland as a whole. After the meeting at the fairgrounds, where there were plenty of voices that echoed that the cost of remediating that the state and the federal government is asking for is very high, expensive, and something that the fair can't stomach from a cost standpoint, um, uh, we had a follow-up meeting with the DEC crew, uh, to discuss what the city can do to help remediate in certain ways, and what the state can do to help us do that. So the major issue is stormwater. The major issue is how we take care of and treat that stormwater before it re-enters our streams. Um, we shared a lot of great ideas, um, some around capturing it and appropriately treating it, some of it around making sure that we had a flow restoration plan in place, and could the state recognize the fact that we were working on that since we haven't done it in the past. Um, we have a lot of follow-up to do with the state, but they were very open and very willing, and I knew, I think this new deputy commissioner who stepped into the role is happy to work with us to see that, um, the burden of those costs don't fall directly on our businesses and especially on the Vermont State Fair. Any questions on that?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say I'm pleased to hear about that. Uh, somebody who's kind of gotten involved with the Agriculture Society over the last couple of years, uh, you know, and all the value they bring to the, to this community, and the dollars they bring to this community. And, uh, there's no way that, uh, they could come up with the millions of dollars, and in small businesses, they'd have to come up with that either. Uh, there's just no way. So, um, we need it remediated, is what we need. So I'm pleased to hear that. Alderman, down to you.
Yeah, Mayor, I know that you're also aware, obviously, you're paying attention to this, that there are a number of properties in the city affected by this three-acre rule, and it's, uh, so there's other concerns even beyond the fairgrounds for local businesses and, uh, service providers like the medical center and the schools and others that have this, uh, impervious surface, uh, of over three acres. So, um, it is, uh, a fairly significant issue for Rutland City and, uh, concern to the fairgrounds, yes, and many more.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a extremely significant issue on two fronts. One, the grandfathered people that have three acres of impermeable surface, and there's, there's a, a list, and it's, it would have a heavy impact on those businesses, as you said. Uh, the city, uh, has its way of remediating, but we've, we're thinking actively about how we can help those entities. There's also a half-acre, uh, component of this, and this is for new builds. So if you're gonna build and, and, and develop, and it's more than half acre of impermeable surface, that is also a problem. So it could be a challenge to development in the future as well. So, uh, especially if you're gonna touch ground and, and rework it. So, um, we're gonna continue to work on this. We wanna make sure that Rutland continues to be a place where development is looked favorably upon, and that we don't put the burden on the backs of the businesses that have been here for some of more than, you know, 70 years, uh, not knowing 70 years ago when they built that structure that they were gonna have to deal with this. Uh, but, you know, the goal of everyone is to, to make the environmental correction, but do it in a costly and effective way. All right, one more quick thing. Um, Alderman Gillum and I did meet earlier this week, and while we were meeting, he brought up the, um, the, uh, food truck, uh, work that's in, currently in charter and ordinance. Um, it was a good conversation. What I hope to do, um, you know, putting together a whole new ordinance and, and adding in a new fee structure does take some time, and we've been working on that. Um, what I'm hoping to do is, uh, at the next Board of Alderman meeting, bring to you, and I'll try to get the documents out, maybe a short-term fix. I know we have some food trucks that would like to continue to operate and not pay the full peddler's permit prices. We know that's higher than other communities, so hopefully within the next two weeks, we can have something available for this board to look at and review.
Good, good. That's good news. All right.
Any questions on that?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're all set. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, no consideration of special event permits, and I can see here, reports and letters from department heads and officials. Looks like we have several entries from Barbara Spalding, so Barbara, you're up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Josiah DeRozia is applying for a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to expand her business, Camille's Experienced Clothing, at 44 Merchants Row in Rutland. Funds will be used to renovate the second-floor space in the building she owns to introduce and showcase second-hand wedding dresses, formal wear, and high-end vintage clothing. The application meets the criteria through $25,000 in new financial investment, and the RRA board met on April 22nd and moved to recommend to the Alderman approval of the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to Camille's Experienced Clothing. A copy of that application was included in your packet, and Josiah is here tonight to answer any questions that the board may have.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Would you like to address the board, or we could just go ahead and, uh...
Yeah. Um, I, if everyone got a chance to, to review, uh, my application, I'm looking to open my second floor for, to become a bridal boutique, an extension of my existing business.
Terrific.
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman, down to you.
Um, I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alderman McClure.
I would just like to let the folks at home, sorry to seal your line, Alderman Gillum, know that this is amazing, because Seaberry Street runs directly against Rutland Intermediate School. And as somebody who walks a lot in our community, this is an area that has needed significant sidewalk repair for the safety of the students that are using that street to get to school. This is amazing. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, Barbie, and I look forward to supporting this.
Okay, Alderman, down to you.
Um, I won't make a motion for the mayor to sign the grant agreement.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made to have the mayor sign the grant agreement. Any debate, any questions? Yes, Alderman, down to you.
Just a point, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, with the grant, it'll cover half of the cost, approximate cost, which is about $150,000, so this, this grant will cover about $75,000 of that, which I'll always go for.
Good point. Uh, anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
That was all good news. All righty, so Chief, I think you're up next. And according to my agenda, your first issue is the renewal of the Swiftwater MOU with the state of Vermont.
Yes. Tonight, I've come before you to ask you for permission to have me sign this agreement. This is an agreement between, uh, the city of Rutland and all state assets around the state for Swiftwater boat rescue. In the event that we had an emergency in our area, I could call up the boat teams from all over the state to come in and help us. And the same would go if, uh, someone else in the state needed our boats. As long as we didn't have an emergency and we had adequate staffing, I could send, um, our boats out to help them. This is something we've been involved in for probably the last eight, 10 years formally, although we've done it before, prior to this agreement also.
Great program. Yep. So a motion to suspend would be in order?
Some of...
Alderman McClure, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alderman, down to you.
I would make a motion to authorize the signing of the memorandum of agreement of the Swiftwater flood rescue team deployment.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to have you, Chief Loveit, sign the agreement. Anyone have any questions for Chief Loveit? Yes, Alderman Gillum.
I don't have any questions. I just gotta comment.
Yep.
Through a flood, I know how important this is to this community. I think the people on Clover Street found out how important it is to them, so this is a real big deal for us, plus I think we'd help our neighbors, because we have a lot of rivers here, and they sometimes overflow, and we need this service here in the town to protect our taxpayers.
Yes, we do. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman, down to you.
Just two quick points. One, that, um, the chief would be, uh, the one deploying this, and, and he has indicated in here, and to me personally, that, um, the city emergency would come first, so he's not obligated to ultimately have to do this, that he can make that judgment call, which is important. And secondly, um, that they, uh, then they were subsequently, uh, reimbursed for expenses, which is also very important.
Very good. All righty, anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes. Alderman, down to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President? Yes?
Just comment on the Bike Week.
Please.
Path has been cleaned as of Saturday. We picked out a whole trailer for what's a trash and shopping cart. Bike path is nice and clean, ready to roll.
Oh, good.
The Rotary Club did that on, uh, Greenup Day, so that was a nice gesture.
Perfect. Good job.
Okay, just a couple more quick things. Again, uh, Loyalty Day Parade was Sunday, it was rainy, but it was a great turnout for, uh, the participants especially, which I think was fantastic. So thank you to all that put that on. Uh, we did have a visit, uh, over the past two weeks from the, um, Vermont State Department of Environmental, um, Conservation, uh, to the fairgrounds. The three-acre rule, which you may have heard of, uh, is something that is gonna be impacting our community. Uh, the state and the legislature right now, and through the agencies, is working to extend the timelines, both for the, uh, engineering, uh, and for the impact fees. That's very beneficial to Rutland as a whole. Um, after the meeting at the fairgrounds, where there were plenty of voices that echoed that the cost of remediating that the state and the federal government is asking for is very high, expensive, and something that the fair can't stomach from a cost standpoint, um, uh, we had a follow-up meeting with the DEC crew, uh, to discuss what the city can do to help remediate in certain ways, and what the state can do to help us do that. So the major issue is stormwater. The major issue is how we take care of and treat that stormwater before it re-enters our streams. Um, we shared a lot of great ideas, um, some around capturing it and appropriately treating it, some of it around making sure that we had a flow restoration plan in place, and could the state recognize the fact that we were working on that since we haven't done it in the past. Um, we have a lot of follow-up to do with the state, but they were very open and very willing, and I knew, I think this new deputy commissioner who stepped into the role is happy to work with us to see that, um, the burden of those costs don't fall directly on our businesses and especially on the Vermont State Fair. So, any questions on that?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say I'm pleased to hear about that, uh, somebody who's kind of gotten involved with the Agriculture Society over the last couple of years, uh, you know, and all the value they bring to the, to this community, and the dollars they bring to this community. And, uh, there's no way that, uh, they could come up with the millions of dollars, and in small businesses, they'd have to come up with that either. Uh, there's just no way. So, um, we need it remediated, is what we need. So I'm pleased to hear that. Alderman, down to you.
Yeah, Mayor, I know that you're also aware, obviously, you're paying attention to this, that there are a number of properties in the city affected by this three-acre rule, and it's, uh, so there's other concerns even beyond the fairgrounds for local businesses and, uh, service providers like the medical center and the schools and others that have this, uh, impervious surface, uh, of over three acres. So, um, it is, uh, a fairly significant issue for Rutland City, and, uh, concern to the fairgrounds, yes, and many more.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a extremely significant issue on two fronts. One, the grandfathered people that have three acres of impermeable surface, and there's, there's a, a list, and it's, it would have a heavy impact on those businesses, as you said. Uh, the city, uh, has its way of remediating, but we've, we're thinking actively about how we can help those entities. There's also a half-acre, uh, component of this, and this is for new builds.
Yep, so a motion to suspend would be in order? Aldwin Taddeo and Aldwin Mcclair, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I would make a motion to authorize the signing of the memorandum of agreement of the Swiftwater flood rescue team deployment.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to have you, Chief Lovett, sign the agreement. Anyone have any questions for Chief Lovett? Yes, Aldwin Gillum?
I don't have any questions, I just gotta comment.
Yep.
Through a flood, I know how important this is to this community. I think the people on Clover Street found out how important it is to them, so this is a real big deal for us, plus they could help our neighbors, because we have a lot of rivers here, and they sometimes overflow, and we need this service here in the town to protect our taxpayers.
Yes, we do. Anyone else? Yes, Aldwin Taddeo?
Just two quick points, one that the chief would be the one deploying this, and he has indicated in here, and to me personally, that the city emergency would come first, so he's not obligated to ultimately have to do this, that he can make that judgment call, which is important. And secondly, that they, then they were subsequently reimbursed for expenses, which is also very important.
Very good, alrighty. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that's that one.
The next lengthy document I sent to all of you folks last week, I apologize for that if I filled your inbox, is the Local Emergency Management Plan. This is a multi-page document that details how the city would deal with an emergency following the national standard. It's important, because if we were to ever seek reimbursement for FEMA, we have to follow this. So, we have to tailor-make our plan to follow the national guidelines. So the first thing is, I would need permission for the mayor and myself to both sign the agreement entering into the Local Emergency Management Plan.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Move to approve, move to allow the mayor and the chief to sign?
Yes.
Yes.
And the fire chief to sign? Okay, motion's been made and it has been seconded. Any questions for Chief Lovett on that? Yes, Aldwin Taddeo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to disclose that my organization and myself are part of the Emergency Management Plan. We do the extreme cold weather emergency shelters. I intend to vote, but just want to disclose that I am contained in the document that we're approving.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
The next page that requires the signature of the mayor would be to say that we will follow the national guidelines, the national incident management system. So basically, it's the same procedure we've always done before, it's just now they require an obligation of a signature saying that we will.
Okay.
We need to suspend the rules, is it the same document?
I don't think so.
No, not for the same document.
Well, just move to authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Authorize the mayor?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Pretty simple, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, we're getting to the bottom of this one. The last one is to authorize the President of the Board of Aldermen to sign into, or make it current, that we have a mutual aid agreement for the DPW, much like the Fire Department, the Swiftwater Boat Team, the same thing applies for the DPW. So if we need assets that we don't own, we can borrow them from surrounding towns. There's a fee schedule that we use based on FEMA. They set the tone and the price, and we can send our equipment out, or we can ask for equipment to be shipped in at the same rate.
Okay, so why do we suspend the rules on that one?
Moved. Second.
Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I think the, I think the motion is to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with DPW?
Yep, it's actually facilitated through the State Planning Commission.
What he said.
You got close to that? Okay, good. So the motion's been made, I believe it was seconded. Any questions for Chief Lovett on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
The last is really a public notice, let everyone know that on May 13th at approximately 6:30 in the evening, we'll be participating in the Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Action Plan, and we will be blowing the fire whistle. We won't do it the full rounds, because that tends to annoy people, and I don't want to over-exaggerate it. We only participate in the spring whistle test, but it's just to make sure that the penetration of our whistle and their sirens cover the whole area.
What's the date again?
This will be May 13th at approximately 6:30, they'll start the test, and it's a timed event. Yes. They wouldn't like me if that was the case. Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Alrighty, moving along, looks like Planning Director Bowe is up next with a couple of items. First one I have is the referral of the draft land development regulations to Charter and Ordinance Committee.
Hello. First up is the topic of the land development regulations, which include the zoning subdivision and flood hazard area regs. We're putting the final touches on that, the Planning Commission is, and the information for the board, and wanted to get this on the schedule early to the Charter and Ordinance Committee. There is no chair of that committee right now, but knowing how that might work, I just want to get this going and the topic to discuss this in front of the board in a referral tonight.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move to refer the city's local emergency management plan, I'm sorry, I'll move to refer the land development regulations to Charter and Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to refer, and it's been seconded. Any questions for Mr. Bowe? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
On the planning and zoning topic, not action, but I just wanted to let the board know that we were awarded the municipal planning grant for $20,000 for data collection, some mapping, some public outreach, and some design for work that's gonna go into the municipal plan update, the Act 250 Tier 1A exemption, and the designation program updates. So, at some point, I will bring a grant agreement and a referral of the match, because we need about $2,000 in match in front of this group.
Okay, alright, very good. And then you have another referral here you'd like to make?
Sure, the, the next is for the TIF phase filing and the development agreement, and this is with the Center Chittenden Whale Street redevelopment project and the Downtown Hotel. Materials for that will be distributed to the board later this week, and the referral is to bring those items in front of the, we're the Community and Economic Development Committee, and have that discussion there.
So move?
Second.
Point of order.
And Aldwin Mcclair, what is your point of order?
The agenda before us says Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, so that was where it was originally discussed, a letter of intent, and then speaking with some Aldermen, we, the thought was that it would go to Community and Economic Development this time, completely up to the group and you, but that's why the change is in there.
Okay, so there, there has a motion been made, it is to go to Community and Economic Development, it's been seconded, we can debate that if you'd like.
I just wanted clarification on the agenda, so I'm all good.
You're good with that? Aldwin Talbot, you good with that? Okay.
It was the hotel team's original request to move it into Committee of the Whole back when this first was the letter of intent, so that's why it was originally taken.
Okay, alright, sounds like a plan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, next on my agenda here is Treasurer Markowski's update on city debt schedules. Please. Evening, Mary.
Evening, thank you. When I was putting together my to-do list for May, I realized that I was going to need the board for a number of things that I'm working on when it comes to city borrowing right now, so I thought I would get it on the agenda with a referral to finance, because there are a number of things that, at the next meeting, we'll need to go over for these bond applications that I'm working on. So I wanted to go over just quickly what, what has come up right now for, we work with a bond bank, Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, and the application periods are May and December. So, I work with, closely with the Department of Public Works on a lot of these projects, when are we gonna need these funds? And in this case, we also have Georgette. So, there are three bonds that we'll be working with the bond bank for. The sidewalk bond, and I thought I would give a little bit of information about that. So, since 2020, the city has approved, voters have, have approved $7 million in streets and sidewalks bonds. So this is the final borrowing as part of that. So that one, I'll, I'll be doing an application for that one, and then in March of 2023, the voters approved a $2.5 million water main project, so that one will also send an application for that. The sidewalk bond will be paid, I want to go back, the sidewalk bond will be paid from the general fund. The water main project will be paid from the water fund, and the next one is the Capital Project Bond for Georgette-Chiller Project. The borrowing will be about $1.75 million, and that's gonna be the first one where we're going to be used that local option tax to cover the, the bond through the Capital Reserve Fund. So that will be a little bit different, but all three will require applications through the bond bank, so different documents that we'll need at the next meeting. The application due date is the 19th, same day as the meeting, but we can still get that in. I am also working with TD Bank for the financing on the JCI project. I was in touch with my contact there, we may have a, a rate that I will share with you as soon as they share that with me, what the approved rate will be, and possibly loan docu, documents for that one next meeting, if they're able to do it. But, again, all financing documents go through the board, so I want to give you a heads-up of what's coming, and, and the public, what, what we're doing here. So I have that. Also wanted to comment on the Georgette project. The first installment of that is about $650,000, so I'm considering we might need a little short-term borrowing just to cover that first installment of that, so I will bring that to the board as well. So I would ask for a referral of the current borrowing and debt schedule to the Finance Committee for additional review, and then I'll go over what types of documents I'll need, will need to have ready for, for the May 19th application date.
Okay, Aldwin Gillum?
I'd like to move all three of these issues into Finance Committee.
Second.
Alrighty, motion's been made to refer the aforementioned issues to Finance. Any questions for Mary for, on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Alrighty, looks like Assistant Engineer, Assistant Engineer Ted Gillum, that's the legal update, that's the executive session, I'm sorry, so let's move to the end of the meeting, so we will wait to the end. And then the same thing with Attorney LeChance, so let's go to reports of standing committees. Aldwin Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Recreation Committee met on April 28, 2025, 5:30. Members present were Chair Clifford, Vice Chair Taddeo, Alderman Gillum, Aldwin Davis, Alderman Whitcomb. Others present were Board President Alair, Aldwin Kupaly, Treasurer Markowski, Attorney LeChance, Director Dolan, Program Director Choffey, Program Director Castle, Program Director Bonacera, Program Director Bose, Program Director Shattuck, and I apologize for this, this mistake here, it says Executive Director Bowe should be Planning Director Bowe. Tyler Richardson, Karen McGrath, Shelley Lott, Nathan Nash, Andrew Shane, and Peggy Shinn. This meeting was convened to address multiple agenda items referred to committee due to the proximity of summer and the urgency of the operational concerns. The chairman prioritized discussion on aquatics and summer camps. Director Dolan and staff presented a detailed overview of disruptions, disruptions resulting from administrative leave of longtime Recreation Superintendent Kim Peters. He challenges including staff shortfalls, procedural confusion, operational gaps, and growing concerns over public trust and program sustainability. The city pool, which, which supports both public use and summer camps, is facing a critical lifeguard shortage, with only 17 confirmed out of the 45 to 60 typically required. Board President Alair asked Tyler if the feedback you've, he said if, asked if the feedback you've been getting from people who were previously employed and worked for the department and for the summer aquatic program previously, and they are not coming this year, did they specifically say the reason was, is because Kim is not returning? Director Dolan responded yes. Staff have cited Kim's absence as a specific reason for not returning. Certification logistics have become strained. Previously, Kim Peters conducted certifications in-house for the cost of her time and approximately $43 per participant paid to the American Red Cross. The city now relies on an outside contractor who is more, who is more affordable than other vendors, but has limited availability. The city has agreed to pay for certifications, recertifications, and for recreation staff to offset this barrier. There is also a shortage of swim instructions, instructor certification, which threatens the delivery of swim lessons included in summer camp fees. To prioritize camp needs, limited group visits with the, with RCPS, RCPS Boys and Girls Club, local school field days, and reducing public school hours, or limiting access is under consideration. As a result, pool passes, pool pass sales have not started, creating uncertainty in project revenue. Several committee members emphasize that swimming is more than recreation, it is a life-saving skill with broad public value. Director Choffey stated if a child does, doesn't know how to swim, then that puts them in danger. A public pool is a public service, and that actually helps to gain a life skill. Aldwin Whitcomb commented, it's also a mechanism for socialization. Over the summer is an opportunity for all of the children in Rutland to intermix, to build confidence in themselves. Director Dolan stated, the moment you realize your child knows how to swim, it removes a huge fear from a parent. Water is scary, and learning how to survive in it is definitely a moment in childhood. Aldwin Kupaly added, I have concerns about some of these failures in retaining employees and pool hours disrupted. What does it say for the following year? I see issues even moving forward. Summer camps, summer camps are currently at full capacity with wait lists for most age groups. The program has generated approximately $190,000 in revenue, which could be impacted if refunds become necessary due to service limitations. Camp staffing, camp staff training is scheduled for May 21st through the 22nd, including CPR training, a responsibility previously handled by Kim Peters, which still lacks a confirmed instructor. All camps are now hosted at the pool location, increasing pressure on aquatic staff. Staffing and administrative issues. There is no formal written policy for hiring, onboarding, or conducting background checks for recreation staff. This gap has exposed the department to risk and create, created confusion. Aldwin, Alderman Whitcomb asked, is there any kind of competency sign-off related to expectations to hiring people? If I go to, and you referred to Director Dolan, if I go to your file, will I find you have completed any kind of competency training on how to bring people on, or how to do background checks? Director Dolan responded, no, I have not been trained in any of that. Attorney LeChance added, we have been able to find, one, a process, background checks were being done in the past across various departments. We haven't necessarily found it in writing, that's been a systemic failure. I think in the past, just that it had never got written down, that it never got written down. That is not a new issue for here or anywhere else. Aldwin, Aldwin Taddeo stated, it would be my preference that when a person is hired, the HR department for any department would run a background check, but specifically for the rec department, because these folks work with children. I think it makes sense to do a background check when somebody is on-boarded, regardless if you're a minor. Director Dolan stated, we are not trained in HR, this is not our job to do that. Attorney, Attorney LeChance committed to HR taking over the background check process, moving forward for consistency and, especially due to the department's direct work for children, with children. Regarding minors, Attorney LeChance clarified that while background checks are not legally required for minors, it is best practice to conduct them, to conduct a limited screening. Other concerns raised were there is no clear policy of who can sign hiring paperwork. Staff were unaware of training requirements like mandatory reporter certification, which only appeared in a newly drafted seasonal job description. No formal training or competency sign-offs exist for leadership staff managing, hiring, or onboarding. Staff expressed feeling unsupported and fearful of retaliation for seeking out further impacting morale. There is a strong community support for Kim Peters and a widespread frustration with how her departure was handled. Handling of her leave has raised concerns about long-term damage to trust, staff retention, and department morale. It was stated that Kim offered to return temporarily to help stabilize summer operations, but was instead barred from contracting, contacting city staff. but was instead barred from contracting, contacting city staff. Alderman warned that, that failure to recover swiftly could result in a multi-year impact on the program, quality staffing pipelines, and public perception. Alderman Davis added, I find this ironic. Following our last board meeting, we signed a resolution for due process. We signed a resolution that supported people's rights to have a voice, yet we stifled Kim. We also stood up to say, we are going to reaffirm our oath to support the city. I may not always agree to something, but that is the oath I take. That is the one that the mayor takes as well. Whatever problem we have, fix it, deal with it, because it is the city that is suffering, it is the community members that are suffering. In response to the department's current challenges, the committee passed the following motion. Alderman Whitcomb made a motion, seconded by Alderman Davis, to recommend to the mayor to, the reconsideration, reconsideration of Kim Peters as Rutland City Superintendent. The motion passed 5-0. Alderman woman, Alderman Davis moved to adjourn at 6:50 PM, seconded by Alderman Gillum. And the motion to adjourn was made, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:45 PM. So my motion, I stand by my motion that's already in.
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion is to recommend to the, to the mayor, the reconsideration of Kim Peters as Rutland City Recreation Superintendent. That motion's on the floor and has been seconded. Seeing none.
Roll call vote?
A roll call has been requested by Alderman McClure. All righty. Seeing no further debate. Please call the roll.
Alderman Coopley?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Whitcomb?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
No.
Alderman Tadio?
I'm gonna abstain because this procedurally, it, this is not a real vote, so I'm just, I'm gonna abstain.
And I'm gonna halt things for a second. Is that, does there need to be a reason? This is a question that the chair does, does not know. Does there need to be a reason for the abstention?
No, there does not need to be a reason for the abstention given.
Okay. All righty.
Alderman Donahue?
Aye.
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
Aye.
Alderman McClure?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, all, motion passes. Okay. That it? Alderman Clifford?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty. Alderman McClure, Human Resources Committee.
That may have been a mistake.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I did not see that. That went quick. Yeah. Well, we've taken the ball, but I'm certainly, I said before that you would be allowed to speak, so you're certainly gonna be allowed to speak, so. And that was my failure not to look outside the rails. I was concentrating inside here.
No, Dave, and it's okay, because I, I'm not sure I had my hand up at the right time anyway. I just, I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Name and address, please politely ask for the record.
Sure, of course. My name's Mary Beth Lennox-Levins, and I'm at 9 Kingsley Avenue. Thank you for your time tonight. As I said, my name is Mary Beth Lennox-Levins, and I reside at 9 Kingsley Avenue. I'm speaking tonight wearing three different hats. First, I am a parent of a 13-year-old who has participated in countless Rutland City Recreation and Parks Department activities since the ripe old age of six months old as a swim lesson participant. Second, I have served as the Rutland Swim Team's parent volunteer coordinator for the past three summers, and my daughter has swam since, in, on that swim team since she was six years old. It has endlessly saved her life, being a part of that swim team program. And third, I am a professor and program director of the sport management and athletic leadership programs at Vermont State University Castleton, the only full-time faculty member in the state of Vermont on such topics. I'd like to speak briefly tonight in support of Kim Peters, and most importantly, in support of the Rutland City, excuse me, the Rutland City Recreation and Parks Department staff as a whole, some of whom are here tonight, of course. Given the three hats I wear here tonight, I believe I have come to know and understand the rec likely better than 99% of other community members. Professionally, Kim Peters and the rec are hands-down my best community partner at Castleton. During COVID, they were the only community partner willing to help still educate my students and provide outdoor and hands-on sport-related experiences, given the outdoor nature of a lot of what they do. Three of the current rec department full-time staff members are alums of one of the two programs I direct, and each semester, including the summer, I have several students, usually between two and 10, completing practicum or internship hours with the rec. Many of you know I am a large supporter of Mayor Mike Dungus. In fact, my recent successful reelection campaign for the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners was tied to his reelection campaign through the Rutland Forward Organization. I still believe Mike is doing some wonderful things for our truly unique city. At the same time, Mike, I think you simply got this one wrong. Kim's value as a community leader far outweighs any negativity brought to light in the last few weeks. If an employee is not meeting the mayor's expectations, especially one with the dedication and incredibly unique skill set of Kim's, you work with her. You work with her to improve. Someone as beloved and effective as Kim simply deserved more effort from her supervisor. She deserved a chance to directly address his concerns and make a plan to better meet his, his expectations. It is truly hard to understand the mayor's goal with the non-reappointment of Kim Peters, especially with the busiest season for the rec just down the road, and no evidence then and no evidence now of a change or crisis management plan in place. It is my understanding, as I think was mentioned by Alderman Clifford, that about four weeks ago, Kim Peters made a genuine offer to come back to work temporarily to assist the rec staff in getting through the summer successfully. She did this despite the lack of respect which was shown to her. She was willing to put the tremendous needs of the community ahead of herself, something we all know that she literally did day after day when in the position. She's getting paid anyway, and she was willing to do the work to ensure the incredibly essential summer programming was planned and pulled off without a proverbial hitch, as it always has. Instead of, after that offer, instead of conversation, she was met with a cease and desist letter and the mayor's letter to the editor, which doubled down on his decision. Now, as a result, I cannot imagine in the most vivid of imaginations that Kim Peters would even want to come back, and who can blame her? Also, as a result of all this, the rec staff members are still left with a mess to clean up, one that was not made by anyone within their own staff. I want to say tonight how incredibly lucky this community is to have such a talented group of professionals within the Recreation and Parks Department. Right now, they all need our support. They all need our understanding, and most importantly, they need a permanent leader as soon as possible, who can provide them and this community with the incredible level of quality it has come to expect from the Recreation Superintendent. If that cannot be Kim, then her skill, her work ethic, and her dedication to this community should be the model. The industry of sport is my entire life's work. Kim Peters is one of the best that I have ever worked with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And again, my apologies. Is anybody else outside that wanna speak on that? Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you very, sure, please.
Sorry, I did have my hand up during the, before the vote, but I apologize, and I'll try to keep it brief. I know we have stuff to work on. Start, I'll start with this. I, I understand the disruption that this decision has caused. If that has not been clear, I apologize. I do clearly understand the disruption this decision, decision has caused. One of the key components of what we are working here is something that is going to be upsetting when I say it, but it is an integrity issue. On my desk sits a little booklet. It's a flip chart, and I got this in 2007 from a company I was working with at the time, Omea. And it's called Leadership Essentials. There are four essentials, and the key one, and one of the key ones for me, is integrity. And I know that's hard to hear, that there may be an integrity problem here because of the things that you just said with the, the wonderful things that have happened in the past. But that is the issue here. You have all heard it, especially this board of Aldermen. You, we had the discussion, you know it, you've got it documented. It is an issue. I did not make this choice for any other reason than that integrity issue, and that integrity issue is something that not only puts the city at risk, but the participants in the rec, and that is hard to hear and understand, but that is very clear. When deception is involved, that means that truth and trust is broken, and it is very difficult to work with, and I apologize to those who are upset by this. I apologize to those that are struggling with this. Trust me, I do not wish to be disruptive. Actually, the goal for me is to keep things moving in the right direction, especially for the summer programs. The rec staff has been doing a phenomenal job under the stress and pressure that they have been under. I have been asked multiple times over the last two to four weeks, is there malicious non-compliance going in, on in the department so that this fails, so that you bring Kim back? And I will tell you, absolutely not. This staff is fully, fully capable of being, of meeting that integrity requirement, and I have seen it every single day. My administration has been working with them as best possible to try to look at every single gap in the system and understand where that, those gaps exist, and try to help them fill them. We have communicated multiple times a week, sometimes in person, sometimes via email, text, phone calls, whatever it happens to be. We have offered our services multiple times, and we will continue to do so, and trying to lead to get through this. We have posted a job for manager now, that job description was approved, to run the pool. We will be posting tomorrow the job description for lifeguards to fill the lifeguard gaps. And while we do not want to adjust any hours and do not want to be delayed on any services because the goal is to open at full staffing and at full operation, we do need to spend time looking at things like scheduling and how to get those staff fully trained. Now, again, the Recreation Department staff has done a phenomenal job lining up all of those components and communicated that clearly. Is it perfect? No. Are we trying to get there? Yes. Do we understand that aquatics affects the, the operation and of all of the summer camps? 100%. Now, Mary Beth stated, we need a leader with the same qualities, and I do agree. We are looking right now at two different things. One is the Long-Term Search Committee. Wednesday, we will be sending out an email. We have that finalized to get those meetings set up. We'll be working with the HR department to put the job description out there and look for a long-term replacement for the superintendent. However, in the short-term interim is the conversation, and that is what we have been working on, so that there is some strong leadership in that short-term period to help the staff get to where they need. And I say to help the staff because they have stepped up, they know exactly what needs to be done. I am confident in their abilities, and we need to support them the best way possible. And I say we, meaning all of us. I understand the concerns of the community. I hear the concerns of the staff and this board. I am not ignoring you. It is not falling on deaf ears. But integrity, especially when it comes to our vulnerable population, is not something that I can look past. It is not something the city wants to look past. One mistake can lead to many, many large impacts. Just like a change can lead to many long-term impacts, so can mistakes. And these mistakes, when covered up, when deception is involved, are extremely treacherous if we do not handle them correctly. My point here is this. The tough decisions, when they are made, are made not willy-nilly and not without a long thought process. This was not something that was decided upon with, with haste. This is something that was a long-term thought process, knowing these impacts. And I want to work with this board. I want to work with the staff. I do not want the staff to feel like their jobs are in jeopardy. They are not. I have said it multiple times, as long as they continue to put in the hard work that they are putting in and do the right thing when it comes to being integral and having that integrity, their jobs are secure because they love what they do, and we love the fact that they do it for us. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
Okay. So there's quite a bit there. We have already taken the vote. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, question. You mentioned integrity. When did you find out about this thing that you see is so bad? You told us our meeting was once ago, right? Why'd you wait till after the election to do it? If you have so much integrity, you would've doubted the second you found out about it. You waited till after the election to make a decision.
Did you wanna?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I will answer that. When, and this is, this has been public, so I'm happy to share it. The situation originally arose in January. There were opportunities between January and the time that I chose not to reappoint for them to be remedied, and it wasn't remedied in that time.
Okay. So I'm gonna try to temper it. I don't wanna put too much on the spot, but go ahead if you have a question.
I guess I might have like clarification of why I wasn't remedied, because my understanding is that it wasn't a good success.
I will, I will give, I'll give you the simplest answer I can. With, I'm trying, you gotta understand, I'm trying to hold everybody in the highest regard when I, when I say these things, and I don't wanna be disruptive to, to the previous When you make a mistake and you don't own up to it, and then you lie about it, and you lie to multiple staff about it, you know what you messed up. You know what mistakes you made. And there are plenty of opportunities and time to come and say, hey, we made a mistake, and we did that, and we, we are gonna fix this mistake, and we are gonna move forward from this mistake. But that was not the case. At every turn, every time this person was questioned, there was another lie, and that is unacceptable.
Okay.
I just, as, as somebody who has employees myself, I feel like I would at least have a conversation with them.
Yep.
And I would address it, and I wouldn't wait and then just, I would address it before they were able to make all those things.
So, so I understand, and we probably shouldn't go too much more back and forth on this, but I do understand and hear what you're saying. Under the advice of counsel, we don't discuss personnel matters, but what I can tell you is that when we choose not to reappoint someone based on those things, you chose, you do not discuss the reasons for that reappointment.
Yeah, and I'm getting a little leery of getting too much into personal issues too here publicly for the benefit of all the people that are concerned.
Absolutely, yes.
So, yes.
So I have a question as a, as a parent whose children attend these camps. With the staffing issues, is, is it time for us to make other arrangements? It is a huge concern.
Yeah. So we are, this week, probably gonna have to look at what that drop-dead date is that, that.
That drop-dead date for parents was last week, last month.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback on that. I, my, there's hope in reality. I can't tell you what the future looks like right now. We have 17 lifeguards that are said, yes. We have training for those 17 lifeguards. Can we look at the schedule on Wednesday and say those 17 lifeguards can cover at least those camp times so that you're, that we can have the right staffing there? That's what we're gonna do this week, hopefully, Wednesday or Thursday. I hope to get you an answer by the end of the week on that, at the very least, to see what the bare minimum is that we can do. But again, my goal is not the bare minimum is to have a fully-staffed, fully-operational aquatics program that allows the camps to run as well and all of the other things, swim teams, so on and so on.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one other question coming from inside the rail, and then we'll move on. Alderman Clifford?
Just a statement, Mr. Chairman. Mike gets clear what's your, what's your reasons, your reasons are your reasons. What's upsetting to me, and I think upsetting to a lot of people, is that Kim hasn't had a chance to speak.
That's correct.
And it's unfortunate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are gonna move on, and Alderman McClure, I believe you are next up for Human Resources.
Thank you, Chair Alair. The Human Resources Committee met on April 30th, 2025. Present were myself, serving as chair, Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Clifford, Alderman Coopley, Alderman Alair, Commander Proudy, Commander Whitehead, Chief Kill Cullen, Mary Markowski, Ellen Coyle, Attorney LeChance, Mayor Dungus, and April Choffey. The meeting was called to order at 5:29 PM. The matter before the committee was warned as discussion on application of union contract provisions to non-union sworn officers. The first suggestion to the committee was The first suggestion to the committee was the implementation of all sworn officers, including the sergeants, commanders, and police chief, that are not, that are not otherwise covered by the collective bargaining agreement being permitted to enroll in VEMR's Part D, and that all new hires from outside the department into these positions shall be required to enroll in VEMR's Part D as condition of employment. This topic yielded much discussion, and the motion was ultimately moved. The motion passed 3 to 0, and I so move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All righty, so there's a motion that made and it's been seconded. Any debate, any questions?
If I may, just for, just for clarification, please. So, and Chief, maybe if you could help me out here. So, VEMR's D was part of the, the union contract that we've settled. So I just wanna, I wanna get all the way here. So, VEMR's D was part of the union contract, and then this motion that Alderman McClure did is to do VEMR's D for sworn officers only?
Yes, sworn officers are the only members of the department who qualify to enroll in VEMR's D.
I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't all employees.
Correct.
It was sworn officers, non-union.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And if you'd leave, if you need me to repeat that, Alderwoman Davis, the first line of that motion was the implementation of all sworn officers, including the sergeants, commanders, and police chief, that are not otherwise covered by the collective bargaining agreement. So that is those members of the police department that are not in the union, thus not covered by the collective bargaining agreement, if there was a misunderstanding there.
Okay, so once again, there is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Anyone have any debate on that? Yes, Alderman Donahue.
Is the chief allowed to provide his opinion on this?
He, you can certainly ask him the question.
So as we discussed, you know, that night, when we're looking to promote individuals, those individuals who are candidates for promotion sort of look at what the benefit package is. And if we don't offer these sorts of things, then there are individuals who are reluctant to take promotions. And going into this, and I think everyone, I don't think anyone will disagree, that everyone's assumption was that, even though this was a union negotiation, and it's a union contract, everyone's assumption was that everyone in that class of employee would qualify anyway, and that class of employee was sworn members of the department. As I said, they are the only ones who do qualify. And at the meeting, any, anytime we talked about this, when we presented it to the board, the figures we gave were using that assumption. So what we had said at the time, in terms of calculating the cost, the increased cost to the city, it was based on all sworn members of the department. And again, as I said, much of the discussion around the department now, because of the struggle we're having getting this through, there are individuals who were reconsidering the potential promotional path, you know, here at the department.
Which is why I would vote for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Whitcomb?
Yeah, thank you, President O'Leary. Just to add a layer of context to this, when this, when the police contract came before us as a board previously, I did vote against this, but I absolutely recognize the importance of, if you're gonna offer a benefits package, it does need to be consistent across, you know, whether they're within the union, outside of the union. You can't create those inconsistencies and expect that you're gonna be able to safely, you know, bring forward people and promote them. So I, I'm fully supportive of ensuring that they're all having the same consistent access to benefits.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
The second matter before the committee was Rutland City Police Department, including sergeants, commanders, and non-sworn employees that are not otherwise covered by the union's collective bargaining agreement, follow the pay scale increases and other applicable provisions of the collective bargaining agreement until such a time as a new contract is ratified. This subject also yielded much heated discussion. Statements in favor were provided by two commanders of Rutland City Police. Due to the length of the meeting and the complexity of the issue, this issue remains in committee to be revisited. A third motion to the committee was mentioned but not provided and remains in committee for discussion when the prior topic is revisited. The committee convened at 7:17 PM.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Alderwoman McClure and her report? Looks like we're all set. Thank you very much.
Point of order.
Yes.
President O'Leary, sorry. There was a motion on the floor to allow those sworn officers to participate in VEMR's Part D. I don't recall that had been voted on. Did I miss the vote?
No.
Yeah, we voted.
Thank you. Apologize for that. It's getting late in the evening. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you. All righty, and let's see. There's nothing left on our agenda, reports and letters, petitions, border control commissioners, cannabis, unfinished business. So why don't we get right down to unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business to come before the board of Alderman? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Probably gotta do executive session.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise, I'll move to adjourn.
I tried!
I mean, if you don't want the legal updates, we can.
Okay, we do have two executive sessions, so why don't we get those motions on the floor? We'll move into executive session and take a quick break.
Detective, would you want me to read the motions?
All right, so, for the legal update from Assistant Engineer Gillen, I'm first looking to entertain a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation to which the city as a party would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion would divulge the city's strategy in such pending litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
Second? All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify. Alderman Donahue?
Include the mayor in that?
That's the second motion.
Who's gonna be the other?
Oh, we speak a second motion and who's included?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, assistant city engineer, commissioner of public works, if he's here, and city clerk to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1E, and Title I, Section 313A1F.
So move. Second? All righty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that gets us into the first one. Let's take a quick break.